Good evening. I'd like to open the October 18th regular trustee meeting at 6:30 PM. I'm going to do a quick roll call. Astral here, Sweattick.
Here.
Augustine here, and I'll have a stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you all for being here tonight. We have two sets of minutes to approve before we open up to our special guest. The September 13th, 2022 work session minutes, are there any changes or edits to those minutes, trustees?
No objection.
No. Okay. Jack, can I have you make a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Astral, and we'll do a roll call vote because I'm going to abstain from those. So Astral?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine abstain. And the October 4th, 2022 regular meeting minutes, I have a couple edits. Do you have any edits?
I just have the typographical error on the first page.
Okay.
Um, where she has Ms. Rambo, and it should be Gam- Grambo.
Which paragraph are you in?
I'm sorry, special guest. First paragraph.
Okay, because it says Grambo. Oh, I see where you got it. Yep. I will make that change. Martha has an accused absence this evening, so she is going to be taking minutes from the recording, and I will get these edits over to her. Did you have anything further to edit? Just Sweattick?
No objection.
Okay, on page two. One, two, three, four paragraphs down where Chief Sutner had a prospective hire. The terms, it says class two start just to month six, class three. I actually just typed in what he put into the email to us after six months for a period of one year. If you're in agreement of that, currently it says after six months, one year. Or two, one year, and it's for a period of one year. Last line before fire.
Yeah, I know. I thought he had said class two for six months, then class three for another six months.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's the wording on here because it says class two from start to six months. And then class two is from six months to one year. Is that?
Three, class three.
I'm sorry, class three. For the, for the second six months.
Okay, I went back and looked at the email that he sent, and when he sent it over to us, it actually, I just took the verbatim language from his email, and it says after six months for a period of one year. Okay. It might be a variable when hiring.
So he would be class three after six months for another year. So after, is that 18 months?
So what does it say in the email about class four? Does it say after one year?
It says after 18 months in the email.
Oh, exactly. Class four following one year at class three. So I think.
So you would be correct in if that, if that's correct, yes.
Okay, so are we in agreement that it should read after six months for a period of one year? That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. And then on page three, under zoning, I just added some language that we, that I also had. Says here that I walked, there was a walk at River Woods Nature Preserve, and I added, and the newly acquired 22 acre property that was donated by Charles Gibson because we bought both properties that day.
That's funny.
And then I added, she complimented resident Mark Kervish for his volunteerism on maintaining River Woods property, and thanked Mr. Gibson for his generous donation. Are you in agreement on that?
That's fine.
Okay, very good. Those are the only edits I had. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the trustee regular meeting minutes for October 4th, 2022, as amended.
Second.
Seconded by Astral. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you so much. And this evening, we have a special guest with us, and I get to meet her in person tonight. Debbie, come on up to the microphones. Our virtual audience can hear from home. Thank you for being here.
Great. Oh, thank you for having me back again for the second time this year. My name is Debbie Kubina-Yatsko. I'm the current director of the Medina County Health Center, which is a division of the Medina County Health Department. And I'm back tonight to talk about the levy that we're going to have on the ballot this fall. When I was here earlier this year and spoke about the levy, unfortunately, it did not pass in May. And so we've made some changes to it, which is why I wanted to come back and, and update you. So the levy that we have on the ballot in November is strictly a renewal levy, and it's a fixed rate renewal. As you may recall, earlier this year, it was a renewal plus a small increase. So we're strictly going with the renewal this time. And the renewal levy funding really is our base funding. So while the health department also gets grant funding, and there are certain things we charge fees for or have contracts to provide services for, the levy really is our base funding, and it affects all our programming. So everything from our inspections of restaurants and sewer systems to our WIC program, to the medical and dental clinics, it really affects everything. And the renewal levy is a fixed rate levy. And so what that means, and what's important for homeowners to understand is, it means as property values increase, the tax does not increase. It actually decreases. So the way that fixed levy works is it was initially passed in 1992. So if somebody was a homeowner, like my parents, own their home in the county in 1992, the tax they pay is the same as it was in 1992. It doesn't change. And for any new homes that are built, it's based on that initial appraisal, and then that's what that tax rate is. So for a, with the most recent home appraisals that occurred, for $100,000 of home value, the cost to the owner is only $9.42 a year. So I like to joke, though it's, is that for the cost of one pizza, I have the confidence that that place was inspected. So I'll give up one pizza a year to know that restaurant was inspected. But that's, that's all it costs at $100,000, and that's per year. And like I said, that is like our base funding. And so there are a couple of things that are important to know about our renewal levy. This is the last time we can put it on as a renewal. And as I said, as a renewal levy, it really saves taxpayers as home values go up. If it doesn't pass this time, and we have to put it on as a replacement, that savings goes away. So like right now on a tax bill, as home values have gone up, you'll see a rollback amount. And that's actually it rolling back to its original value, not the current appraised value. With a replacement levy, that doesn't happen. So it would actually cost homeowners more and raise more money than the health department needs. And we don't want to ask for more money than we need. So the renewal, for that reason, is important. The other reason it's important is currently the state of Ohio actually relieves some of the burden on taxpayers by providing funding to go towards that renewal levy. Because Ohio changed state law, if it goes on as a replacement, that cost sharing goes away, and the full burden of the levy falls to taxpayers. So we are really hoping that it can pass this time as a renewal. It's the best thing for keeping Medina County healthy and making sure we can still provide those services, but it's also the best value for the taxpayer. And I'm happy.
Going into a couple of things that the health department does. I don't think people understand the full scope.
The full scope.
I don't expect you to go through all of it because it's probably a very lengthy list.
Yeah.
My visits to the health department, but if you could just touch on a couple of things that maybe our residents aren't aware of that the health department provides.
Oh, absolutely. So we provide every death certificate and birth certificate that's issued in the county every year, and that's well over 7,000 that we issue. And during the pandemic, when everything shut down, we never stopped providing that service, even though other health departments did. We kept that going. Our WIC program, Women, Infants, and Children, so for families who are struggling, we can provide assistance with breastfeeding, with formula, with diapers. We do a car seat safety check program and can provide car seats to eligible families and cribs for safe sleeping for babies. And again, during the pandemic, we never stopped providing those services. We just did it in the parking lot. So we would meet families where we could to make sure that they were getting those extremely necessary services. We also do all the flu clinics, you know, through, in the community. We go out into different areas of the community so that they're local and people can get their flu shots, and the COVID vaccination clinics. And a lot of health education around drug abuse issues, around just health education in the schools. We do a lot inspections. Like I said, restaurants are important. We inspect every school, campground, pool in the community. And then my, my area, the health center, we have a full dental clinic, we have a full medical clinic, and a social worker on staff, and we can serve anybody. So if they, people have insurance, we take insurance, we take Medicaid, we take Medicare. But we're also there to provide services for people who are uninsured. So we have sliding fee scales, and we get grant funding so that a lack of insurance should not stop anyone from getting necessary care. And so those are some of the, some of the services that we provide.
Thank you so much. I really am grateful that you're here. Now, when, when it wasn't, it didn't pass the last election in the spring. Do you know, I know the time before that it was a minimal amount, maybe like 12 votes or something.
Yeah, the time before was like seven votes. I don't know the exact amount this spring. It was maybe around 1,000, I believe. So, yeah, so they, it's been very close. And that's why we thought maybe if we went with just the renewal, we know, you know, everybody's been talking, the appraisals were coming out, people were worried about their home values going up and what that would do. So we thought if we went with the renewal, and the fact that it's a fixed rate renewal, that that might make a difference and, and, you know, help people out a little bit.
Thank you so much for being here. I think it's really important that we spread the word, and sometimes when you just see a sign on the side of the road, you maybe don't fully understand it. So I appreciate you coming out and sharing that with us.
Great.
Do you guys have anything else to add?
No, I have flyers if anybody would like.
Do you want to put some at the table?
Sure, absolutely. And then anybody that wants them. And of course, we're happy to answer any questions.
I think it's wonderful, everything you do. I was talking with Krista a couple of weeks ago, and we were reminiscing about the levy failing. What you're doing is probably the most cost effective thing for every citizen that's out there. The bang for the buck there is, I don't know how you get anything better than that, which, what, what is being offered from the health department and the services that go on there. And I agree with you, if, if the average person who's going out to vote takes a minute to do some research and see what's going on there for their, I don't know where you're getting pizza for $9. I'll tell you that.
I know, I know.
So for less, yeah, that it's very worthwhile. And I, I hope that folks take the time to go out and support it, and I appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We have a question here.
Oh, yes.
Could you comment if the health department is involved with home septic systems?
So yes, we provide education on home septic systems. So especially, like Krista and I were just talking today about new homeowners that have maybe never had a septic system before, and how we want to get the word out that they can contact us, and we can provide, you know, education to them to make sure that they don't do anything that'll end up in a very costly repair.
Okay.
So.
Are any grants available to help homeowners?
So grants come and go. So my suggestion is always just call us, and we'll, we'll let you know what we have available at the time.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
For being here. Good luck.
Thanks.
And Chief Sutner is not with us tonight. He doesn't have anything on the schedule, so we will pass it straight over to Chief Rosenbaum.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I got one, and then one item on here, and then two little things afterwards. Request resolution to enter into a one-year annual program for the inspection and repair agreement through Pro Care Services for $13,191.70. That covers the annual maintenance and inspection of our two stair chairs, which is devices used to carry patients up and downstairs in homes. The power loads and the power cot system are, are, they both work together. That's what we received BWC grants for that help prevent back injuries by loading the lifts and raise the cot into the squads. The Life Pack monitors, which is what the medics use to interpret heart rhythms, and also there's, there's a whole bunch of other things it does with AEDs to be able to shock or have medic shock, also interprets the oxygen saturation in, in your blood. And then the two Lucas devices, which is the what, if somebody said, we need to do CPR, we can hook it up, and it, it takes hands off. So it gives perfect CPR each time. And that, the, the contract will cover anything. If we need new finger probes, if we need new lead wires, if we need brand new batteries, anything like that. If something, if something's wrong, they'll come out, check it with no, no cost at all to us. So this is what we do every year. So I'd like to have that resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Sweattick. All in favor, say aye.
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 Melissa, I'm going to steal. I did not give me a, give, make myself copy of the annual report, or I'm sorry, not annual, the quarterly report. So I'm going to steal yours for a second. So we did the quarterly report for quarter three, 138 EMS calls, 45 fire related calls. Year to date was 567. Previous year to date was 564. 75% of our calls are EMS. Year to date, 71% were EMS. 13 fire calls, 138 EMS calls, and then we had 32 false alarms. Service or good intent calls, lift assists, wires down, tree, trees down, stuff like that. Average response time was seven minutes, 40 seconds. We had 9.84 calls that were overlapping. We, we had multiple calls at the same time. We gave Mutulade 22 times, once to Bath, five to Brunswick, one to the Brunswick Hills, 13 to Granger, one to Richfield. And out of that breakdown was six building fires, three vehicle fires, one brush fire or grass fire, three MVAs, four EMS calls, and we had five that was canceled in route. Mutulade received was 10. Brunswick City gave us five times, Granger three times, and it was three for motor vehicle accidents, six for EMS calls, and we did cancel one of those departments once while they were in route. We transported most of the time to Brunswick Cleveland Clinic, Southwest Brunswick with, Cleveland Clinic Brunswick was 36% of the time. Medina Hospital was 17. We had two DOAs, five to Parma. Lift assist, we had seven. I'm just kind of skimming over some of these. We had 27 patient refusals, which was we went out, saw the patient, and they said, we don't need to be transported. A lot of the times, that's with motor vehicle accidents or lift assists, where they just need to be helped off of the, off the ground or from bed to a chair or something like that. We had two cardiac arrests, six traumas, one non semi chest pain, one stroke alert, one sepsis alert. We had five behavioral evals, and then one psychological eval. We had seven possible overdoses. We required additional manpower, 26% of our calls during that quarter, and then 29% of the time for the year to date. We did, there was Assistant Chief Kerbasi, along with the other inspectors, completed several inspections. And then we had a total of 754 training hours. And then we had 17 calls into the station. Please, please, please call 911. Yes, we're at almost 60 calls into the station this year. It's, when I talk to other chiefs at chief's meetings, it's one thing I always ask them, and most of the time, they don't even have 10 into the station in a year. We have, and they're from, sometimes it's simple as, hey, you know, my smoke alarm is chirping. I think it's the battery. Still call us because you don't know if something's smoldering somewhere. Two, we've still had one that was a working fire. Hey, my neighbor's barn's on fire. Can you please come and check it out? So I cannot stress the importance of calling 911. Yes, we are staffed around the clock, but if they're out on a call, it's going to ring and ring and ring. The only other thing I have is, oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. Just, we have the, the two levy issues coming up in November. Issue 24 is a five-year renewal. It's what's currently being paid into right now. It is not a new tax. It's $31 per $100,000 property valuation, and it brings in currently $348,400. Issue 25, which is a new five-year one millage levy, it is to increase our staffing from two man to three man, which will increase the safety of our patients and our staff. It'll also help keep, maintain our vehicle replacement, equipment replacement plan. If passed, it will cost an average of $35 per $100,000 valuation, and it'll generate approximately $390,500 annually. That is all I have. Thank you for everybody that came out to the blood drive this weekend. We had 34, 33, 34 pints collected. Yep, it was another good turnout.
Very good. Does anyone else have anything for Chief Rosenbaum?
Are you going to stay for the rest?
I'm sorry?
Are you going to stay for the rest?
No, I'd like to be dismissed. I like, I like to be dismissed and watch this.
Anyone from the audience have anything for Chief Rosenbaum?
Thank you, guys. Have a good night. Be safe out there.
Mr. Bahari, from Service.
How's everybody doing today?
Very good. How are you, sir?
Not too bad. I only have one thing. It's the revised purchase price for the trade-in for the service department for the F250 purchase. They, the original price on this was the 33, 986, 52. Now that we're getting closer to delivery, we took the 2015 utility police interceptor, and they did a trade estimate of 42, 50, which the new price would be 29, 771, 52.
They're not charging us to take it. They're going to give us some money.
A little bit.
It's a gem.
Yeah. So.
Especially with the mileage on that thing.
That was about all I had. If everybody's in agreeance with the purchase price, I just need someone to sign it so I can return it to.
I think Jack's doing it.
Perfect.
Are we making a motion? Are we just signing away?
I think we've already.
Did we make a motion?
Do we need to make a motion?
Probably for the new price, yeah.
Make a motion to purchase the F250 as quoted from Liberty Ford Incorporated with trade-in, reducing the purchase price to $29,771.52.
Second. Seconded by Astral. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's a long, long wait.
Thank you for your patience and your work on it. Anything else, sir?
No, that's, that's about all I have. Valley Brook, all they have left is the radiuses that they're going to pour by hand when they get some better weather. So once that's done, they should be moving out, hopefully moving over to Bethany.
Bethany squared away?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, they got all the contract info. I haven't heard anything from them yet, so. But hopefully, I would say, he said he was going to call me this week to, to meet on site out there, see all what we need to do, so.
Have you have to get over to Valley Brook, but I intend to do that.
They did a good job. They're a real good job, so.
Got a call today. Somebody stringing some line down Manningly. Do you know anything about that? Okay.
Which section of Manningly?
West of Ridge.
West of Ridge. Maybe, well, it's County Section Road, but I would assume probably just, probably phone cable or fiber, probably. Be my guess. I don't know.
Well, somebody went out and asked, and they said, we're just running in line. We don't know what it is, or.
There's potential development on Stony Hill and West Manningly. At that.
Snide, I was just curious what it was, the homeowner was, are they bringing some fiber down here? What are they doing? I don't think it's Medina County fiber, so I don't know what it would be.
I don't know. I think it could have just been repairing something too, you know, now.
Very good. Thank you for clearing the tree.
Oh.
And thank you for, he, him and his team have already sealed that wall at Maple Hill Cemetery. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, it's all done.
Very good. Anybody else have anything for Mr. Bahari, or we let him go to watch his game?
I do know.
Anyone from the audience have anything for Mr. Bahari? You're free, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Very good. So really quick for zoning, I just wanted to let the public know that there is a continued public hearing for a map and text amendment proposal on November 3rd at 6:30 PM, and it will be followed by a regular meeting. Again, that's November 3rd at 6:30 PM. And also wanted to let you know that we are increasing engagement with our current landlords of businesses and industry. And Hinkley, I had a conversation with the zoning department today. We're going to be going out to those landlords and asking them just to kind of give us a heads up as to who's utilizing the buildings and renting from them so we can be aware of change of use if it comes up. So just to have you all be aware of that. Tend to try to start an Excel spreadsheet or a Google Doc that lists all of the business owners and their contact information moving forward with that information. And very quick for cemeteries, I have a deed. This is something Suzanne and I were talking about. We do this publicly, and it's another thing that our folks are, have paid for and are waiting on. I don't know if we want to continue to do these publicly. We had this conversation about the milars for lot splits and things of that nature. There's no motion associated with them. So how do you feel about potentially just having them signed in office with two witnesses so that we can move these along?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
That's very good. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and sign. I need two witnesses from the audience to step up and witness our signing this deed. Anyone? Walk up, watch us sign, and then you have to sign saying that you saw us sign.
And we'll take a credit card or personal checking.
As usual.
As usual, yeah.
Normally Carl and Jeff, so we have like new blood up here. This isn't the special time.
No, this is not my hour. No, it was a debacle.
It was a debacle. Yeah.
We did not have a special.
Martha was going to get us each a pen for Christmas. Oh, my goodness. Thank you both so much for coming up to do that. I don't have anything else for cemeteries, so I will pass it over to you, trustee Astral. Thank you very much. I'm looking.
I have a quick zoning question.
Yes, sir.
As a result of the last hearing, will anything new be going to the Medina County Planning Services?
It's my understanding that Medina County Planning Services wanted to wait to hear what our hearings produced as far as the map amendment of the buzzer code business area, and that could potentially go depending on how the hearing goes.
My question is, how would that be transferred to Medina County?
Via motion from the zoning commission.
Which state did not mean?
No, but it's a continued hearing. So they'll, they're continuing the hearing on November 3rd. They could make a motion to, to send it over to the planning commission.
And the planning commission will be on November 2nd.
That is correct. So it wouldn't be.
So will they have new information or not? They asked for new information.
It depends on what the hearing provides. I don't have a answer for that.
Hearing is, the continued hearing is the next day.
Right.
I thought they continued the hearing because they still needed something from the planning commission. Isn't that what I understood?
No, they are continuing the hearing because they want to. The planning commission is asking to garner information from Hinkley Public before they, they hear it or see it. The zoning commission will determine if it goes back to the planning commission. That would be seen and heard in December.
Go ahead.
At the county level.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else about zoning? Okay, trustee Astral.
Okay. Let's get the hard stuff out of the way first. I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution authorizing the fiscal officer to forward $636.20 to Kimball for the Hinkley Township unpaid trash 2021, T1601, second half 2021 property taxes. In accordance with paragraph 6.1 of the contract, any delinquent charges that are collected pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 505.31B specific to assessments are set out. $209.43 are unpaid from 2020, and 426. and four hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents are unpaid from second half of twenty-twenty-one. The additional thirty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents in penalties collected by the auditor's office will be received into the general fund.
Second.
Seconded by Sweattick, and it's a resolution, so I'm gonna do a roll call. Astral?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. Okay. Um, I have a couple of Kimball things then that I want to go over. I talked about a month ago about the fuel surcharge, if you both remember. That is being applied for September, I'm sorry, August, September, and October. Um, I'm just gonna read this last half of his email, which says, "Kimball has determined to assess its current quarter as well as next quarter based on this formula, which was agreed to by Hinkley and Kimball in two thousand nineteen. Dollars and cents-wise, the invoice will have increases for both quarters, but we only have the August, September, and October increase at this point, which is two dollars and sixty-one cents per month, or seven dollars and eighty-three cents a quarter." For the November, December, January invoicing quarter, they're not gonna know what that price will be until the last Monday of the month, which is ten thirty-one, which is when the U.S. Department of Energy posts the diesel price for the month. So there will be, you will see in your next bill, the August, September, October increase of two dollars and sixty-one cents per month, and this is part of the contract. And he thinks, I mean, we're not gonna speculate, I'm not gonna throw a number out there, but he thinks if it goes up, it will be very minimal for November, December, January. But that's kind of a heads-up to everybody about that. Lynn wanted me to make a couple of points about the opt-out frame. The Kimball opt-out timeframe is between November second at nine AM and ends November fourth at noon. Opt-out applications will not be accepted before this, and they will also need to be emailed between November second at nine AM and noon on November fourth. We're not taking any hard copies, email only. I have had a couple of residents reach out to me already saying that they did not receive the opt-out form in the mail. We did not mail out opt-out forms. We mailed out the annual letter. That's what we sent out. So it is on our website. If anyone has been on the website recently, the opt-out form is on the website, so you can download that and fill it out and email it back to us, or you can download, you can fill it out right on the website during that timeframe and hit submit, and we'll get it that way.
And just for the public's knowledge, these are timestamps, so when you send the email, if you're sending the email at eight fifty-seven because you wanna make sure you get opted out, it won't count. We will not count it at all. So nine AM is the starting point.
Correct. Um, I wanna have a little conversation about proximity with the support and the backup. I do have a motion on here, which we probably won't end up going forward with tonight, but I wanna talk to you both about some issues that we're having in the front office right now. I don't know if you've been on the website recently. Lynn has done a ton of work on the website. She's really cleaned it up, and she's really getting herself much more familiar with it, but she is still not, she's a little bit timid on making some changes to it. They have reached out to Proximity a couple of times with questions, and Proximity just kind of reminded them about the care plans that they do offer for anyone like us that, you know, needs some additional support after we have launched. I believe you both have the care plans here. Talked to Lynn, I've talked to Suzanne about it. There are three different options to choose from. If we were going to go with an option, we are all in agreement that we would wanna go with that middle-of-the-road one, the plus maintenance plan for a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month. I talked to Martha about it also. We were kind of in agreement that if we could do this month-to-month, that might be something worth exploring for the rest of this year with the amount of time it would save Lynn with trying to navigate things on the website. However, we can't do it month-to-month. If we do this with Proximity, it is a twelve-month commitment, and then after that, it goes month-to-month. Speaking with Suzanne and Lynn both this morning, they feel, um, they just need some additional training on it. They, and, and I have to agree, we have, they have an email drafted to send Proximity to ask some additional questions, but it looks like these packages are for backups and security, which that is not the issue they're having. The issue is additional support with making the changes that they are doing here in-house. So I had suggested to them, which they were both in agreement with, instead of committing ourselves to one of these plans right now for a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month, maybe just go ahead and plan for a maximum of two additional hours of training with Proximity, which would be two hundred and fifty dollars. However, we agreed, if we make a motion for two hours, let's just start with one hour. Schedule one hour of additional training with Proximity, and then we have that additional hour if needed. Now, I did make a motion back in September not to exceed one hour for a hundred and twenty-five dollars for the additional training if we needed it. So if you are both comfortable with this, I would say let's just let it lie where it's at right now. We have that motion out there so that we can do one hour of additional training, see how that works with both of them, and then if we need more, we can make another motion at our next meeting in two weeks.
Have we received any training on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but we received a training, which actually went, I think, like an hour and a half, and they didn't charge us for that over the hour. They, we were not billed for that, which I did just confirm with Martha today. We paid the flat rate that we had agreed to with the contract, and that was all. And the recording, the training was also recorded. I'm not sure if you remember that, because I know you couldn't be here for it.
I think I walked in when you guys were doing
Probably.
Yeah, but I didn't think that was a training.
That was, that was the training on the website, and it is recorded, and we did it that way so that they can refer back to it. So if there are things that they covered off in the training that are not done monthly, that you would just kind of forget, not by using it all the time, they can access that recording. And that's exactly how I would suggest doing any future trainings with Proximity also, is doing it over Zoom and recording it so that the ladies can go back and access it.
I would become comfortable adding another hour. I know we have the motion for the first hour, but I, I would be completely comfortable adding the second, just so if they need another training, they don't have to come back to us. They can just schedule it. I mean, if we talk between now and the end of the year, they may need a second.
Okay, so I'll just make a motion for one more hour.
At the one twenty-five?
At the one twenty-five. Okay. I would like to make a motion to higher proximity at a price not to, at a cost not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five dollars for one additional hour of website training.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Um. Um, our YouTube is finally up and running. If anyone has seen it, the YouTube channel is Hinkley Township, Ohio, so you can access the township meetings. They are now all posted to YouTube, but they are also posted to our website, so you don't even have to search YouTube. You can just go to Hinkley, twp.org. Um, Melissa, I had received your email, I think it was two weeks ago regarding the Zoom.
Yes, I was actually, it's got on my agenda, so I was just gonna mention it.
Okay, um, if I am understanding it correctly, and I don't know that I am, you've been having issues that you've been getting booted out when you're trying to proctor. Lisa was texting me earlier today. She was having similar issues, I guess. She had to do like a big reset on her phone, so, um, I think she got that resolved with Suzanne.
Because it stays up, it's still recording, it's still active and engaged and working, but it says I'm, I've been logged out because someone else has logged in. So my fear is that someone is trying to access our account.
So my suggestion to that would be, should we change the password?
It's, I mean, it's a problem at all.
Okay.
Yeah, we could see if that helps. It's, like I said, it's, it's regularly happened. I think I've maybe proctored three different meetings, and I've got another one to proctor tomorrow night, so I could see, we could change it tomorrow and see how it goes.
Okay, do you wanna change it when you're in there?
Sure.
Tomorrow? I was going to do it, but since you're gonna be there tomorrow, you can go ahead and change it.
Yeah, I can change it. That's no problem. That's a good idea, so we will change that.
All right. That's on your list. Um, I did speak with Bethany Dentler regarding the CRA zone with Drug Mart yesterday. Actually, she still has not heard back from them, and she does not expect for us, because that is so far down their timeline, and they've got so many other projects going on. She thinks that they're, um, they're happy with the decision that came from the board a couple of weeks ago, but she does not anticipate hearing back from Drug Mart with if they're going to proceed or not until March or April of next year. Not sure if you both have had questions from residents. I've had a lot of questions from residents asking what's going on with that corner, and I, I don't know. So now this at least kind of gives us a timeframe that we can say probably March or April is when we're gonna have a better idea of if Drug Mart is going to proceed with that intersection. And last thing I wanted to talk about is Lynn's position. Um, I believe you both were copied on the email today that Suzanne had given me. Um, Melissa, you had mentioned it at our last meeting discussing an increase in pay. The biggest thing that I want to discuss right now is I think that that job has kind of been, that position has kind of been an evolution, and that's what I talked to Suzanne about this morning. From the time that Chris Miller came in, and then Chris Medwood, it kind of morphed into something a little bit different. And now Lynn's there, and I feel like it's kind of morphing into something different than was initially thought of with that role. So something that I would like us to work on is maybe redefining that role. Because I feel like it's morphing more into like maybe a webmaster role because of Lynn's expertise and Lynn's request to be so hands-on with the website.
She loves it.
She does love it, and she's very good at it. But I'm thinking that that's something that we should work on maybe in work session and redefine that in January in our organizational meeting. And in regards to the salary with it, the pay, what I explained to Suzanne today is as we redefine that and we kind of change what the expectations are for that role, maybe that's a different starting pay. Um, we can discuss it more, if you both wanna discuss more, um, a possible increase. I, I feel we're really close to the end of the year at this point, when we have not reached a full year with Lynn in that position. I think she's doing fantastic. I think she's doing an excellent job. But I feel it's a little premature at this point.
I do as well. I, that, you know, what I had spoken with them about, anything new, there's gonna be a learning curve upfront, but the whole intent of doing this was to ease the burden on that office, which I think it will eventually do. I think it's gonna make it easier for what they're doing. I don't know that we're looking for a webmaster. This is a township, you know, that we don't have to have biggest and best and baddest that there is.
But we could.
But we have you.
I'm sorry. Rain on your parade.
It's okay. We just, there needs to be a consensus on what direction you wanna go.
I honestly, I mean, she, what is she making, fifteen dollars an hour? My daughter works at Chick-fil-A. She makes thirteen dollars an hour. This job description does not talk about what Lynn has done on this website. Now, we have gone decades with a volunteer who has been managing the website. Now of a sudden, we've got a new website. We knew that was gonna be a cost. We've got YouTube. There would be a cost associated with having someone upload those, those videos, and the work that she has put in, I think, well deserves more than a dollar. I brought up a dollar just to get us to the point that we could have a further discussion, and to your, to your point, maybe reevaluate what this job looks like. I, I would, I'm in agreement. I'm not sure it should be a webmaster position because the, the role encompasses so much. But I think that we are doing a disservice to Lynn and all of the things that she has taken on in addition to her description, if we don't compensate her for her time and her talent. And I don't wanna be at risk of losing someone as phenomenal as she is with all the work that she's put in and all that she's learned.
Um, I, I agree with all of those points, and what I said to Suzanne when we spoke about it today is she has taken on a huge role with the website. I would not argue that, and she's done extremely well with it, luckily for all of us, because she's eased the burden. Um, two points with that is she did request it. That was something that she wanted to do, and also
Who else was gonna do it? We weren't gonna pay Proximity the three thousand dollars to do the three pages of edits, right?
Who else was gonna, well, Suzanne was, I mean, Suzanne was, Suzanne managed the website with Brian Letko.
And she's still, she's still is working on the website. They're working on it collectively, but
So, well, and that's something also that I think should go into redefining that role. So I don't wanna lose track of my points is that was something that she volunteered for, you know, during the interview process. When she heard that we were gonna be updating the website, she's, she got an extra little sparkle in her eyes. She was excited at the, at the possibility of working on that website. Now, that is in addition to the job description, absolutely, but some of those burdens have also been alleviated from the job description. Like the Kimball, we're, we're limiting that now. There are busier times with Kimball when we have the assessments in the spring and then the fall. That's a busier time with Kimball, and during the opt-out, which Lynn and I are about to get thrown into, I know that that's gonna be a busier time as well, but we are starting to alleviate some of that Kimball stuff just by, you no longer press one to speak to someone at the township about Kimball. It's contact Kimball directly. So all reasons of why I feel that we should redefine the role in organizational meeting. And, um, you know, something that I've been giving a lot of thought to is she is very good at the website, and she does like working on the website. And initially Suzanne had said, "Well, I'm here more than Lynn is here." So Suzanne still needs to be very hands-on with the website, which I agreed with. But then I started thinking about that a little bit more also, and I'm not suggesting we remove Suzanne from the website, but I think Suzanne should take more of a step back from the website to make sure that we are managing the time the best that we can for that front office, that this is something that if Lynn is doing the web stuff, she could even work remote two or three days a week. So maybe she works at home on, and I'm just gonna use days for an example. Maybe she works at home on Monday for two hours and Wednesday for two hours, and then that gives her a little bit more time to be here on Tuesday and Thursday. So it's something that she can still check email while she's at home, see if there's any updates that need to happen to the website, and she can do that remotely from home. So it's a better use of her time to do it like that, and it alleviates a lot then from, from Suzanne.
I think that this conversation really should be happening in executive session. And further, I think that removing Lynn from the office removes an extra person who answers the phone, who greets people. This office is flowing pretty regularly during those business hours, for limited hours.
I agree with that, and I would actually like to see a greater separation. I don't think that door should be locked when we have personnel in here.
Which door?
The front door. If somebody's on duty in there, the, the door should be open.
Well, the rationale, and this is just based on my understanding Well, the rationale, and this is just based on my understanding from previous boards, was that in order for Suzanne to accomplish the work that she needs to accomplish in the hours that she's limited to. Shutting the door and limiting office hours would allow her a quiet time without regularly people coming in to interrupt the time necessary to get things done. So you're saying that expand office hours to when our staff is here.
On duty, yeah. That's a totally separate discussion.
And then that would probably make Lynn full-time.
Also.
I don't know. I have to look at the hours. Um, I think there's, there's a lot to consider. I think that, um, like I said, the conversation maybe should be had in, in executive session as it pertains to compensation of an employee. But I, I, I am very firm in that when I look at the budget, I think the funds are there and they support this, this position's time and talent.
Well, that's almost verbatim what Suzanne said to me earlier today. And just because the funds are there, I don't think we should say, oh, we got to use them. Um, that is the duty that we are charged with is making sure that we are making fiscally responsible decisions. And we are two and a half months away from organizational meeting. I, I, I really think the first step before we're talking about an increase, I really think that the first step should be redefining that position. And if that's something that we want to work on in a work session, you know, we talked about a month ago about bringing back the work sessions. Um, I would probably have to do evening or earlier morning. I don't know if everybody would be open to that.
I thought we said we would discuss it in November.
Well, that's, yes, we did. That's, I'm just talking about. This is something that could be discussed in a November work session. So we can discuss work sessions in a few weeks. And doing that, that third. No, I'm sorry, the fourth Tuesday, because we couldn't do the second Tuesday in November. So we can discuss it then.
Okay, um, I did have a question about the website that I have heard over and over and over again. Is the pictures that are on the website do not represent Hinkley Township. I, um, had someone who used to work for the township express concern that we don't have permission to use those people's pictures of their homes on our website. And I had another resident call me and say, how, how come my house isn't on the website? Is there any way we can garner pictures that better represent the municipality? By your station building, service department building, historical society building, town hall, police, Veterans Memorial Park?
Well, um, those pictures actually were received from a photographer who had permission to use these homes. And these were the only at the time, high resolution photos that we had. Which is why these are what were used. Part of the beauty of this that was discussed in um, the meetings with proximity is these pictures can be changed whenever we want to change the pictures. So I, I think some of them are, I think they're all lovely photos. Uh, we have Dropbox that is full of another thirty or forty pictures that I would love to use, but they're not high resolution. I think you and Martha had both suggested maybe having contests for it. So that, you know, maybe the best decorated house and, you know, pick the top three houses for Christmas or Halloween. And, you know, kind of showcasing those on the website. So I think that this gives us the flexibility to use whatever photos we want here, as long as they are, as long as they are high resolution.
Okay. I would like to see them update. I think that, that I'm, I'm getting a lot of calls about them and I think it's kind of, it's something I've regularly said, I think they're beautiful pictures. We don't have permission from those folks. I don't know who the photographer is. The permission that they have is between them and the person. It has nothing to do with the township. Now the township has them on the website. We don't have permission from those people.
I don't know legally how that works. I just, I know they gave permission for the photographer to use them because they were on a calendar that was used to raise funds. So I don't know if there needed to be additional permissions. I kind of think once you've agreed to the permission and then the photographer gave us rights to the photos also.
Okay. And then the proctor procedures. Did you, were you in agreement on the proctor procedures that the proctors can, should be recording? Because I just hit record to record this meeting tonight. It's not working from the iPad all the time.
That's fine if the proctors are going to do it. Um, because it's recording not to the actual iPad. It's recording to Zoom, correct?
Regardless, it's, it's recording to Zoom. Um, but it's not working on the iPad all the time. The zoning commission had the same problem that I had at our last meeting. And that you couldn't record from the iPad.
Oh, because if you're not made co-host, that's the only.
I don't know what the technicality is. Um, today it wouldn't, it didn't pull up to record. So I recorded from my computer into the cloud.
Okay.
So if we can put it on the proctor's procedures and let them know that they're to record after they let everyone in, that would be great. All right. Anything else, trustee Astral?
Um, no. That's all I have.
Okay, trustee Sutick.
Buckle up. Here we go. Make a motion to approve reimbursing Patrolman Sean Land as a biannual payment of twelve hundred dollars in lieu of Hinkley Township Health Insurance in accordance with the OPBA Hinkley Patrolmen's Collective Bargaining Agreement.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would you make a motion to adopt a resolution to adopt the Hinkley Township Fuel Inventory and Usage Policy and Procedure Document dated October seventeen, twenty twenty-two in accordance with the recommendations from the Ohio Auditor of State?
Second.
Second, if I, Astral, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did you want to make that a resolution?
I did.
Oh, you know what? We'll do a roll call vote then.
Okay.
Astral?
Yes.
Sutick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Um, relative to the ARPA funds discussion, I just wanted to take note that, uh, after considering the items out there that were available, I would like to support, uh, a new roof for the town hall incorporating solar technology. So if we can, uh, I don't know what the status is with the attorney that we've agreed to.
We need to make a wish list of the items that we would like to, to see it. And then I can send it off to him and see what, what is approved and not.
All right, I will send it to you. That's where I am at.
I'm actually, um, working with a company right now. Martha just supplied me with the electric bills for all the, all four buildings to get some numbers, some hard numbers from them. Um, I saw that this was on your agenda, so I was waiting for you to bring it up. I wanted to discuss with you both, I, I believe it's been discussed in meetings already. Um, using all of those funds to go towards the road repairs. And then that frees up, you know, we can use the nine hundred thousand dollars that in the, in the funds to go towards road repairs. And then that nine hundred thousand dollars in the general fund that is allocated towards road repairs for next year can be freed up. And we can do, we can spend that money, um, however we want. We don't have to worry about, does it fall into this category or this category or this category? Will it be approved? And it makes it a little bit easier because it's one big chunk. Martha had the concern of, she didn't want to see a piecemeal of having, um, five different projects with the RPA funds. And I wanted to see where you were both at doing something like that.
I looked at that and I, I, I honestly would like to hear from the attorney, the mechanics of running through, uh, projects through the ARPA funding requirements. That concerns me that, you know, if we do that, and I think it was Mr. Pearl brought it up, is that it's at a shell game? And are there issues with, you know, utilizing the money and then redirecting it? I don't know. I don't know what the answer to that is. But I do know that, uh, what I am suggesting, I know that falls under the umbrella that would be acceptable. So if you find out that that's an alternative, that's something that we could definitely look at.
I have the same concern. Um, and I think that a new roof is much needed. And I would add new windows to that conversation. I was shaking in my office for about three hours this morning because it was so cold. Um.
But you also told me the air was on.
The air was on. And we turned the heat on, but I still was very cold in my jacket.
Way to get warmer in here.
And I went and got coffee for everyone because it was so cold in here and I thought that might warm us up. Um, but I still stick with my inclination to spend the dollars on water and town center. I think that, um, none of our town center businesses have suppression systems that meet fire code. And the mom and pop shops that are there that we want to support and we want to see in Hinkley Township cannot make any improvements without needing fire code. And so in many ways, we are stifling their growth and their prosperity. Um, my fear is that if we don't offer this opportunity for them, we open the door to developers coming and buying out those small businesses that are having a very difficult time in affording the funds that are necessary for the consistent well checks and all the things that go with um, the systems that they currently have. I fully support what the comprehensive plan audit survey results show, which was that are the people who filled out those surveys wanted to see water in town center. I will always stand by what the people of Hinkley have asked of us. And I think that's a fantastic way for us to measure what citizens want. It's tangible and it's quantitative. Um, and I just don't think that I think that there are grants for solar and there are grants for roads and there are grants for all of the other things presented. And there, we have a one point one million dollar budget for roads. We don't have a budget for water. This is a once in a lifetime opportunity for Hinkley Township.
I, my concern with the water is two concerns. Um, we don't have any numbers right now, the cost right now, because the numbers that you provided for us were from last summer, which I'm sure are now higher. And that already had exceeded the, the grant. Um, also to run water, it was one of those, what are we going to do? Are we going to do the fire department? Which we've been hearing needs the water or the center of town. If we run it to the center of town, who's going to hook up to it?
Every single person that I know that owns a business, a building, not just a business, because a lot of those people are renting, the building owners, many of them have already put deposits down at the county. They're waiting for water. And the numbers that I gave you.
Renters can't, renters can't tie into that. That would have to be the property owner.
That's what I'm saying. The property owners are in favor. I have not spoken to a property owner that's not in favor.
Where are the emails? That's, I guess that's, that's my concern. Where I haven't heard of one property owner that has come to a meeting. I, I have talked to some.
I.
And I, I would think if this is such a big want and desire, they would be here asking us for it. They would send emails to us. I, we have meetings, I mean, generally four times a month. And I don't see them coming here asking for it. So
I think they're in a tough spot.
To me, it feels like.
And, and there are people who are against water. They, they risk their business.
What do you mean?
I think if they come in and they say, I'm for water, and the people in the room say, oh gosh, they're for water and we're not for water, they, they risk business opportunity. I'm just telling you that if I owned a business and I talked to one trustee, I would assume that that one trustee would relay it to the other trustees. I don't need to send an email. I don't, I don't need to make a phone call. I have not talked to a property owner in town center who doesn't support it.
I, I would think that if it was that big of a, an issue, I'd be, I'd be coming here publicly and asking for it, or at the very least sending an email. But that, and that's just one of the points. The other point is, I think that this exceeds the budget. And where does it go? Does it go to the fire department or does it go to the center of town?
All the numbers I gave you, by the way, are still accurate. That's why I didn't change them. Because the numbers that he gave me in July of last year were the same. And I'm trying to find my document that has those numbers. Um, and yeah, we can make decisions on the way that the water would, would go. Where would it, would it go to the fire department? Would it go to town center?
Even, and this is where I'm stuck on this. Even if you brought it in and was there eight, ten businesses that would tie in? You'd be spending all that money for eight or ten properties. So that, that's why I'm looking at something that's going to benefit everybody, that there, e- eventually there'll be a return on the investment. You know, recapturing electric costs.
I completely understand that and I support that ideology. But our town center is where community happens. It's where community happens every single day. We've got a trick or treat event that's coming up. That's, that's where, that's where we collectively gather as a community to celebrate who we are.
And in the almost forty years I've been here, there hasn't been water there that, that hasn't been stopped that from happening.
They're struggling. I've talked to residents who are, who are struggling. They are begging for water. They can't watch, wash their clothes here. They have to go to their in-laws' house to wash their clothes. These wells are well over a hundred years old. It's poor water quality and we have an opportunity to help them. I'm just asking you to consider it because I don't want a developer to come in here and say, well, we can just bring it in.
Same boat as, as Monique. I haven't heard from anybody who's saying, I need you to push to get water in, in town, just in town center.
You have a survey with fifty-seven point three percent of the folks that say they want it.
And the other half don't.
But fifty-seven point three said they do. That's the majority. And our job, in my opinion, is to stand for the majority. And that's what I will do.
But those majority don't live on this corner.
They, this is their community. This is their town.
I know that.
They don't live here and they still want it for the business owners and the other folks that do live here. And I'm going to even blow your minds even more and say, hey, let's exceed the grant amount and make it happen. So that's just my opinion. I stand with the people of Hinkley. And the survey results and the business owners have told me that's what they want. And I'm not going to let a, a fear of progression stop what the people of Hinkley have, have directed us to do.
I wouldn't say it's a fear of progression. I just think it's uh, it, we're going to continue to grow. The township is going to continue to grow. The center of town will, I mean, eventually start growing again.
How? They can't, they can't update their buildings without, they, they can't meet fire code. None of them meet fire code.
Yes.
And they may spend money in bringing water to town center. We don't know. But the bottom line at the end of the day is they won't make, meet fire suppression code if they go in to make any changes to it.
I'm sure they considered that before they spent one point eight million.
And like I said, maybe they have plans to spend the six hundred thousand dollars to bring water down. I don't know. But regardless, I'm not talking about one business. I'm talking about businesses that are existing here now.
Well, and then maybe that's something, um, I don't even know where I'll begin with this, but I'll see what I can find out with what I had mentioned about a month ago with replenishing the aquifer to replenish the wells.
The other thing, um, Jack, to your point, when we're talking about facility needs, I, this carpet hasn't been cleaned in well over a decade. Probably needs to be cleaned. I'd love to see new paint here. And our, our water system here at town hall really needs some looking after. And I know the water system at the service. And I know the water system at the service department needs some looking after. So those would be options as well. I know we don't want a piecemeal, but there are things that need to be updated that have not been because funds weren't available.
Well, I'll see what I can find out with what is involved with replenishing an aquifer. Or you know, like a sister, you know, something that I talked to fire chief about, you know, maybe redigging the well at the fire department.
I have a quick question about the fire department. When we built the new building, did they drill a new well or did they connect to the service center well?
I have been told that a new well was dug.
That's my understanding as well.
I don't know if it was not deep enough or from from my understanding with the wells is you can go 50 feet over and dig another well and you can get great water.
And you can go 100 feet deeper and hit a different problem.
Right.
Or you can hit nothing.
Or nothing. That's true. There are dry holes. Thank you.
All right, so we'll do some more research.
To be continued. I mean, that's something that we have a November work session, kind of dig down into this a little bit more. Because it is the end of the year.
Anything else, trustee Sweattick?
Moving along. I had on here for the Gibson property signage. I spoke with Mr. Gibson today and he wants to take a moment to review this. I have a meeting set up with him on Monday, so we'll revisit that afterward.
Thank you for your work on this. I really appreciate it.
Did you get any price quote from Crusoe? Because there was no price on that.
I explained to Mr. Gibson that those were renderings. And so he could take a sign design that he liked and change the font or, you know, move things around based on the look of it. And then we would go to pricing. You know, wood versus vinyl, all these different variables that, you know, will be based on what he he wanted to see.
A while back, Otarma came out and did a risk management audit for the township. I have drafted a reply that I gave you a packet. There were three open items on there that I talked with Martha about. One was obtain proof of insurance for personal vehicles used for township business. For the most part, we have none. Add written cybersecurity and social media policies with training. I was assuming that was going to be incorporated into the manual, but I haven't seen any, what's going on there?
I'll touch base with her. The last email that I got, what I think you both were copied on, so-
She said she'd have something.
Yeah, and we haven't received anything, so I will follow up with her.
Right. And then-
That was, do you know, that was like the very first thing on an agenda for like my first meeting. I was somehow thinking we were going to get that done in like February or March.
Welcome to the public sector.
And it's the middle of October.
The last open item was Kentucky annual driver training, which pretty much the police chief does. I don't know that, you know, we've got the fire guys. That's something that do we want to consider having them do some kind of training?
Interesting.
Outside of that, I I
I'm sorry, so that would be with the fire?
Revisit that. Pardon?
That would be with the fire?
That I mean, the only other people that really do driving here is zoning.
Zoning inspector, yeah. I know that Montville Police has a program, a driving program. It's worth looking into.
Because the police did one last year, didn't they?
Police do. Dave usually does like an annual, especially winter skills. But they didn't do it during COVID. I know that.
I heard I heard from an officer, there was a really cool class at Tiger Falls last year.
Yes.
On the winter training.
My daughter did that one.
If anybody has kids, I would say
It's great.
They, I think it's Drive Team, that's out of Tiger Falls. We sent my son to it. He's 30 now. And he still to this day says that's the best money we ever spent on any kind of education for him. It's a it's a fantastic program, especially for any teens that are out there. It's a winter driving skills. They put you on a skid pad. Very, very, very good stuff.
Very good stuff.
But I digress. So I will draft this response and get that off to them.
About the handbook.
And the last thing is, as the police department lays on, if you're both in agreement, I'm going to reach out to the attorney and have them reach out to the police unions because we have not received anything relative to negotiating for the contract.
I'm in agreement.
Okay, very good. I'm done.
Thank you, sir.
You had a whole list today.
I thought we were going to get out of here and watch that game.
Behind what you guys have.
You guys all got the email that I sent you with the Cleveland.com article. And in your packet is a resolution that I've drafted based on conversation with some councilmen in Brunswick. There is an email attached here. Their concerns about Strongsville just engaged an engineering firm and paid $319,000 to study a possible I-71 interchange at Boston Road. That is in Brunswick, so it will affect Brunswick much more than it will affect us. But I think the intent is to then utilize West 130th and the industrial park, which would have them exiting through Hinckley Township. And those are residential areas on the Hinckley Township side. So if you are in agreement, I'd like to just offer this resolution that opposes that exit, potential exit, so that we are looking at the public health, welfare and safety of our residents in Hinckley Township. I don't think it does us any harm to put it put it into the record. Hinckley Township as opposed to that exit, if you are opposed.
I I really don't want to. I I don't know that I object to it. I don't. I think it eases some of the traffic. It takes some of the congestion away. It it's creates a safer environment, especially for a lot of our folks that get on 71. If you've ever been up there in the morning, what happens up at 82 is just ridiculous. There's an accident there practically every day. So if you can more smoothly drive traffic onto that and ease that congestion that occurs up at 82, you know, more often than not, I was driving all the way through Hinckley instead of going to 71. So there, you know, a lot of folks were doing that, going up and going through Royalton and everything to get past 82 and then onto the highway pass there. So I don't know that one way or the other, that this creates more traffic for Hinckley. And I don't think it does, especially what you're going to see is a lot of the stuff coming out of Brunswick going up to Boston and then over to the interchange. And with that being said, like I think I said once before, that I think they've been talking about this interchange since 71 opened.
Well, they just made this resolution in Strongsville on September.
Yeah, they keep spending money on it, trying to get it done, but I don't know that it will.
I'm not opposed to the resolution. I I think Jack makes good points. I mean, I I see I see both points to it. It is a big residential area. I I agree. I worry more about actually the businesses over there. If there's an exit to it, higher probability of theft within the exit ramp to the highway can hop on and off easily. So which a lot of those are Hinckley businesses over there at 130th. And I think that that is, I worry that that would create kind of a mini 303 situation or a mini 82 situation there at Bennett's Corners. If there was an exit over there. And it's already it's already a high traffic area at that intersection. I mean, I remember literally when there were five intersections at that at that intersection, which is why it's called Five Point, if anybody does not know. So I'm I'm not opposed. I'm old enough to remember.
And I'm old enough to remember too.
Remember when it was, what was it? It wasn't Rego's. It was Country Counter?
Yeah, because it's Rego's now.
It was Country Counter. I I remember going up there getting the Gatorade gum, so.
All right, well-
But enough of my memory.
I'm going to go ahead and revisit and then we can vote appropriately. I'd like to make a motion to enter resolution opposing the proposed interchange on Interstate 71 at Boston Road, whereas the city of Strongsville has engaged an engineering firm to perform feasibility and traffic studies for a new interchange at Interstate 71 in Boston Road. The interchange, whereas the proposed interchange will increase vehicular and large industrial traffic on Boston Road in Hinckley Township and West, I should say, West 130th in Hinckley Township. The proposed interchange will result in increased roadway maintenance, repair and replacement costs to Hinckley Township relative to Boston Road and other roadways in Hinckley Township. The proposed interchange will negatively impact Hinckley Township residents, including those residents in the vicinity of the proposed interchange. The Hinckley Township Board of Trustees hereby resolves. This board does hereby declare its opposition to the proposed interchange on Interstate 71 at Boston Road, that the fiscal officer is hereby authorized and directed to forward a certified copy of this resolution to the Strongsville City Council, City of Strongsville Mayor Tom Percyak, Ohio State Representative Tom F. Patton, Medina County Commissioners and Ohio Department of Transportation Director Jack Marbanks, that this resolution is hereby declared to be a measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public health, welfare and safety and for the additional reason that this board wants to express its opposition to the proposed interchange.
Can I ask something? Or is we like the information that's in here will increase vehicular traffic, large industrial traffic on Boston Road. Where did that information come from?
This this came from Brunswick, but it will increase on Boston Road and our section. It will also increase on West 130th. Because it's an interchange, so that's going to bring higher traffic. If there's an interchange exit and entrance there on Boston.
They're guessing that. And how do they know that it's going to come in through Hinckley? How do they know it's going to come on to our portion of the roadway? They don't know that.
I think the assumption is that it will go to the industrial park on West 130th, as I said earlier, which has a lot of residential on the Hinckley side. And when they exit, they're going to be in that West 130th vicinity. It's going to be a lot more traffic on those roads, a lot more noise for Hinckley Township residents.
Okay, so it's an assumption.
Correct. So the question is, is are is this board opposed or in favor of the the interchange on Boston?
I think it's going to, I think it's going to create, I don't think it's really going to create more traffic on Boston Road for Hinckley. I think it's going to create more traffic on 130th in Hinckley because you're going to have people that are in that Strongsville-Royalton area that would normally go up to 82. They're going to come over, you know, with that Hunt Road, they're going to come over to Boston. So they'll be on 130th, traveling south on on Hinckley Roads, getting on that.
So why don't we amend the resolution where it says Boston Road to West 130th?
Can I, Cindy?
I just have a question. How long will the study take, you know? Like, when do they start and they, um?
I'll be dead.
This has been, this has been a rumored thing that's been, they've been working on for years and years and years, but they just spent significant dollars on it. And I just think it's a good idea to have it in the books that Hinckley is in opposition to it.
I just, I'm just wondering, like, when the study will be complete so that we could at least review the results of the study. And then from there, you know, you can use those-
Hey, see, I like that. I like that better.
I mean, I'm just throwing that out as a thought. I mean, does that have to be tonight that the person?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't have to be tonight. It was just something that I wanted to present tonight so that we could stand collectively. I think Strongsville is Cuyahoga County and they haven't talked to Medina County at all about this. And they just made a resolution to spend the money. And this is the second stage of the process for them. So they're pretty serious about it if they've already spent monies on the first stage. My my honestly, my biggest concern isn't even traffic. It's crime.
Then we should put that in the resolution.
Certainly could.
I mean, I'm just, you know.
It's a valid, it's a valid point to me. I mean-
See, and they're even in that article, they're talking about Noaka-
For that point of view.
Noaka disapproving the project in April of last year. So
But they're continuing it. They're continuing to push it in Strongsville-Cuyahoga County for Medina County suburbs.
Again, I understand why. But I would like to see information that's stronger than an assumption.
Mr. Larson?
About a year or so ago, I remember reading in the papers that Strongsville Mayor's is really pushing this proposal to alleviate all the traffic congestion, congestions on 71 near where the Costco is where you can't hardly move it.
Where it's backed up from, I am.
Residents that would receive all that traffic, who were predominantly in Strongsville and were commenting on this, were adamantly opposed to it because they know we're all that trapped here, so they're going to go. And I can, you know, I was looking at the satellite map of this. It is predominantly residential down there. And people are going to be people, they're going to take the shortest way to get to where they want to go, no matter what the impact is on people that are surrounding that that new intersection. And, you know, I guess pigs are going to fly because I absolutely agree with Melissa on this one. There is nothing good going to come from that. And if those residents were in that proposed area, they'll live in Hinckley. We're here tonight. I can't imagine very many would be supportive of it. I understand what you're saying, Jack, that that will change the whole character, that area. Frankly, I think it would lead to more development in the more business oriented sections of that area because it's so easy to get to and from there. And I absolutely agree with the concerns about crime. These freeway on-ramps and off-ramps are just, you know, they're getaway zones for people who do bad things. So there is a lot of issues that are surrounding that. You know, why do they want to put it there? What's the motivation of Strongsville Mayor for for even asking for it? What's to alleviate a problem in his in his town? He doesn't care about this area out here. So this is not a simple problem. This is a complex problem. And Jack's right. He and I both probably did it before they actually get it built. If it's been spoken about, I've been here 20 years. It's been spoken about two or three times that I remember. But just the fact that you're bringing it up now is a real strong indicator that people are really seriously thinking about it.
Well, it looks like they've already spent the money on the study.
There must be some money there to do it because it will not be cheap. And thank you.
But it looks like they've already spent the $300,000 plus for the study. Might as well see what it says before.
I agree. I think that we need to plan ahead for the for the future of our town and for our residents. So what I did is I amended it to read the proposed interchange will increase the vehicular and large industrial traffic on West 130th in Hinckley Township. And I also changed Boston Road to West 130th in the second section as it talked about replacement and maintenance and repair of roads. And I added, the proposed interchange will negatively impact Hinckley Township residents, including those residents in the vicinity of the proposed interchange and is a threat to the safety of residents in Hinckley Township.
And businesses.
Residents and businesses. So I can update this if you would, if you already seconded, trustee Astral.
Seconded as amended.
As amended, thank you. And I'm going to do a roll call for it because it's a resolution. So Astral?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Okay.
What is that?
Yes. With reservations.
Augustine, yes. Augustine, yes. So the resolution passes. Thank you for your support on that. I will get an updated copy with the changes of the amendment and we will get it certified so that Martha can, um, we can send it off to those entities. Alrighty, moving right along. Martha had sent you an email and this is something I was working on. The national opioid settlement was something we worked on last year. Forrest Thompson and Medina County Prosecutor's Office has been instrumental in this at a state level. He has worked very, very hard to make sure that this opioid legal case, made sure that it, it was passed. It had support from every single township. I was at a meeting last year with every single trustee in Medina County to support this endeavor and he has just done a phenomenal job. So the funds are now available for us, which we made a resolution to, to accept last year. And we have to assign an administrator. Currently it is Forrest Thompson of the Prosecutor's Office. And I'd like to recommend that we make it Martha so that she can set up the account and we can go ahead and, and obtain those funds. If you're in agreement.
I am.
I think she's already on there, right?
She was working on it at the same time I was. So we haven't formally put her on there yet, but I, I would just wanted to make sure that we were in agreement before I emailed Heidi and said, let's do that. Wasn't that the email that she sent saying that she had emailed Heidi?
Yeah.
Yeah, she, I think she has had conversation, she and I have both had conversation with Heidi about it, but I just wanna make sure everyone's in agreement to put her on. Um, and then for future, just wanted you to think ahead as to what your considerations are for the use of those funds. We could have them go to our police department. I just read that what Brunswick did was they actually donated the funds to Kathy's house, which is in Medina County, and they work specifically with people who have, um, need rehabilitation from a drug, drug and alcohol issues. So something to consider for future discussion. Uh, received an email from Melinda Swan, who's the president of the Hinckley Chamber. I believe you were both on that. And if you weren't, I added a copy of it into your packet. They would like to put together these cute little holiday signs, um, for the tree lighting ceremony.
We didn't get that one.
Did you not get that?
I did not.
I'll pass it down.
And I don't think I got an email either.
Um, the tree lighting ceremony is something they're gonna start back up again. They had stopped because of the, because of the COVID. Uh, and so what they're doing is they're asking businesses and families to purchase these signs in support of that event. And we really don't have a place in Hinckley Town Center to put the signs, so they are requesting to put them on Hinckley Township property. Which has really not been done before without trustee approval. So I wanted to see what your thoughts were about potentially putting those on the Historical Society Corner. And the Town Hall Corner, because I don't believe that they would really belong in Veterans Memorial Park. That's my personal opinion. Uh, but that is where the tree lighting ceremony will take place, is in Veterans Memorial Park. And those will just, um, kind of similar to what some of other communities do. Acknowledge the folks that were involved in the tree lighting event.
I like the idea of it and I don't necessarily object to it. My concern is, um, where does it stop? Because we've been, I think, I think there's like ten or fifteen signs right out by that side door right now. So I think that the chamber does a lot of fantastic things for the township. This is a way for them to, um, raise money for the community. So I don't. It was kinda like the website discussion, right? It was, if you open this door, it's very difficult to shut the door. Um, which is why the chamber's not on our website either, along with, with anything else. Um, that's, that's the only thing stopping me from saying yes. I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I just think it's. Somebody else weigh in on this.
I, just so you know, the signs are at the front door because I talked to the zoning department about pulling them out of the line of sight because a lot of times they're in the road right away.
I asked them to go out and collect anything in the right of way that.
Yeah.
Some of the corners are looking ridiculous.
And actually, I, I pulled about three of those signs myself and I called Pete Kerner myself and had left a voicemail for his committee because they are.
You wanna be a judge, you gotta be judicial in what you're doing.
And his were in Hinckley Township Center on our property here. So, um, this is just them asking to go about it the right way and letting us decide.
Sure. Which I, I like that they're at, you know, and that's one way of saying, well, they came and they asked us for this. Uh, now where are we? Like, are we thinking on the hillside? Like by the sign, by the historical?
Yes, primarily. If they have a bunch, which this is the first year, I can't imagine that there would be a bunch, but I imagine that they would also request this corner here at Hinckley Town Center at some point on, on where this building is.
Closer to the sign, so it's not in the right of way.
Yeah, but I think that, um, to your point, once you do it.
I have to say no.
You have to do it every year and it's gonna grow.
Well, it's not just every year. It's who comes to us next and says, you let them do that.
Just so you know.
Ma'am.
They do do, they do do like a banner at the Historical Society for Buzzard Day, but they have to have a permit for it. So this is not very different from that. They would have to have a permit for it. But because it's not been done before, I thought it was a good idea to bring it to the trustees.
Nikki Long, um, I just sent an email to Suzanne today or last night, maybe, asking her for permission to put two signs on township property the day of the Hinckley Holiday Market that would indicate which way it was. And, um, she said that I, I, I'm pretty confident that she said no, but she did direct me to, you know, that it would be possible um, if I pulled, you know, paid for a permit. Now, I, I don't know, or not paid for a permit, got a permit for it. I'm not sure how much a permit is, but I guess I'm just adding to this conversation that if you approved it for the chamber, I would hope that you would approve it for me too. So, thank you.
Case in point. Anybody else while we're here have any requests?
Maybe I'll see the sign out in the town hall.
Well, that's, I mean, because the holiday market raises funds for the township also. Township services. Thank you.
I'm just bringing it to the board. That's, I'm just doing my job.
What if they just got their, what if there was like a hundred signs and they place them in their front yard? Like, keep Hinckley rural, right? Or like an election sign, everybody puts it outside of their house. It's.
I mean, another thing that they had discussed years ago were those little banners that you put on the poles going through town. Um, to acknowledge the businesses of the chamber. Um, some, some communities acknowledge veterans, you know, everybody does a different, a different.
Are we capable of that? Do we have like the things to hang a banner on?
Uh, no, that would be something they would have to purchase with, uh, so approval and everything, yeah.
Um, I love that idea.
I mean, I could tell, um, that you love that idea.
I like that. I, I, where was I? I was just, um, was it Brexton? Maybe, maybe Brea? And I saw, um, the veterans, you know, on every, every pole and I just thought, wow, those are still up. I mean, I was wondering when they went up and they were still there last week and I just, I think, you know, like Brunswick did, um, the snowflakes.
Yes.
On, on all of their poles. I think that looks nice.
Except we have some leaning poles. It'll just enhance.
Yeah, you can put whatever, you can put whatever you want on a first energy pole. They won't have you take it.
They don't care. A missing sign, a wanted sign.
I'm gonna go back to the chamber with the solid. I'm assuming no.
I'm saying, I, I have to say no just because of where, where do you draw the line?
Agreed. And we have, to your point, we had this conversation about the website, but I wanted to do my due diligence. So thank you for that. I will get back to them and let them know.
But it's still early enough that they could come up with another idea. I like the telephone pole thing.
It's definitely an idea. We, we're idea people here.
It's the synergy of the board.
Um, Feeding Medina County sent us a letter, uh, requesting a donation. Now, I just wanted to do my due diligence and bring it to you. We did make a donation back in twenty twenty. And the reason was because we had about five hundred dollars left over in our CARES Act fund. And that was a viable expenditure, was to donate it to a, a, a nonprofit that was doing something specific to COVID. So for instance, they had increased the numbers of meals that had gone up, almost doubled them during COVID. So that was our rationale for our donation at that time. Um, so I don't know if this is something that the board wants to support, but I thought it would come to you and see if you wanted to make a donation to Feeding Medina County for their, um, Spring Forward Gala.
So it was a one-time thing and now we're on their mailing list?
Yeah.
Don't click on things.
Katie?
I support for the Feeding Medina County. Don't get me wrong.
Putting, putting a dish out there for the raccoon, the stray cat.
It's a wonderful organization. They do a lot of good work.
To refer to them as the stray cat. They are a wonderful organization. Sorry, I shouldn't have made fun of that. Um.
So we wish them well.
Yeah, because then.
Where do you?
Again, where do you stop? I mean.
I wanted to make sure I brought it to you. And then, now you have the letter. So if you decide you wanna go to the gala, you have the information. That's right away.
I didn't get that letter either.
Really? I'm slacking. I thought it was in the packet. All right, I'll make you a copy of that.
No, we're all, we're saying no to everything.
I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna make you a copy of the sponsorship reply form. So if you wanted to sponsor it even privately or personally, you could.
And then they will contact you next year.
Yes. Instead of saying, dear Raymond, it'll say.
I already got my one.
Dear Derek. Um, tomorrow night. Are you guys ready for tomorrow night?
I will be ready virtually. I will not be here.
I am so excited. Cleveland Metro Parks and Medina County Park System are coming here to give us information about donating land to each one of their entities and what those different boundaries are for each entity. Very excited about this. So they will be here at six thirty tomorrow night. If you cannot be here in person, it is open virtually and it will also be on the YouTube channel. So if you completely miss it, you can log in three, six, nine, hun- hundred months from now and see the video and get the information. Um, and then last but not least, the trick or treat is scheduled for this Saturday, October twenty-second at four o'clock PM. It will be here in the old fire station base and then just head north. There's been some information on, in, in the Medina Gazette that it's the wrong date, the twenty-third, I think, is what's in the Gazette. And, um, so just FYI, it's the twenty-second.
Our seniors in church. I went by and it said trick or treat October twenty-ninth. And I called, but I don't know if they, that was a church event, you know, because you just drive by it so fast, but a lot of people are gonna see that.
I think the Greensmouth had originally had the twenty-ninth and then they moved it.
Other day that was at the church on that digital.
Well, it becomes this Saturday, the twenty-second.
You can get candy in Hinckley any day you want.
It's not gonna be, I like ordered a heavier cape to go with my costume. And I'm not gonna. See if you can recognize me. See if you can pull me out of the crowd.
Just tell us where you'll be and then we'll figure it out. Um, really quick fund status. I just wanted, there's a total of six million eight hundred sixty-four dollars, eight hundred and se- eight hundred sixty-four thousand dollars, eight hundred seventy dollars and fifty-five cents. That's a lot of dollars. Um, and then I'd like to make a motion, pay the bills in amount of a hundred ninety-three dollars, six hundred seven, snipes.
Hundred ninety-three thousand.
She's in a rush to get out. Seventy-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. I am second. Seconded by Astral. All in favor, say aye.
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 And we will go ahead and open it to the public. Are there any public comments or questions? Yes.
Every, uh, business owner that I've talked to, or the, um, renter in the town center, every homeowner in town center that I've talked to, um, has all wanted water.
Thank you. And just for the record, your name?
Carl Castle.
Carl Castle. Thank you, Carl. Anyone else? Can you state your name for the record?
Jim Morrison, Tony Carrow in Hinckley. Um, there was a lot of discussion about water and what to do with the art of funds tonight, which is really good. But I would suggest, since there's obviously gonna be disagreement. If you guys wanna see water here, and there's been a lot of quotes, a lot of calls, a lot of people asking us, get a petition. Have all those people who are willing, you know, that wanna have water presented to their properties, sign this petition and also make it binding. If they sign this petition and want water, they're gonna sign, they're going to sign up for it and be able to pay for the, uh, access to that water into their properties. Um, that would have a heck of a lot more weight than all, you know, the, I get calls, I get calls, I talk to people, we close the dirty, that kind of stuff. But it comes right down to it and people, because there's been water presented here before and they haven't signed up for it because the access to the water is too expensive. They wanna pay it. I would tell you that if there's enough people here, they should be willing to sign for it. But by signing, they're committed to get it, get that, uh, that water transits in front of their property for their business. And I'm not sure anybody's gonna sign a petition like that unless they know what the costs are gonna be. And nobody knows what the costs are gonna be to get it put in their houses or businesses. And nobody knows what it's gonna cost on a recurring basis to get it put in their, um, you know, in their houses or businesses. So, and there's been a lot of, there's a majority, fifty-seven percent of the people that did that survey or, you're interested in getting water. But what about the seventy-odd percent of people who didn't wanna see any more conservation districts? That didn't wanna see more senior housing? I don't think we should just cherry pick those items on the survey that we wanna see get done. If you pick one, if water is an issue to get addressed, you at least should address the other phenomenon, I mean, the other issues that people avoided overwhelmingly that they didn't wanna see. And what those actions would be, that's not for me to determine, but you just can't pick one and disregard the other.
Mr. Larson, the, the dollar allotments for hookups is on the county website. So that's an internal and an external hookup and those fees are outlined. Um, so, and actually, a business owner, a, a property owner who has a building here in town center gave me that information. This is something they've been looking forward to and trying to, to get into town center for quite some time. Um, with regard to cherry picking, that's not what's happening. And that's why I wanted the survey results and the memorandum to be added as an addendum to the comprehensive plan so that when we talked about our text amendment and map amendment changes, they aligned with those survey results that we didn't wanna see conservation developments anymore. We didn't wanna see senior housing or assisted living. So all of those things are something, are things that I will continue to fight for based on those survey results because they are a tangible measure for us as trustees to move forward with. But because they are not a part of the comprehensive plan, it's gonna be really difficult to align with them. And if you remember, in the comprehensive plan audit meeting, I had said that I didn't think that the water question belonged on the survey. And our committee said that they did believe it, it belonged because they wanted the trustees to know what the public wanted with regard to that, specific to this grant. And.
Pretty much know the cost, then it shouldn't be very difficult to come up with a roster of people who are willing to sign up for it. Is it ten? Is it twenty? Is it a hundred? Is it everybody who lives up in Downbridge Road? Is it, is it gonna run up in Downbridge Road? Um, and I know you quoted the estimates, uh, of construction costs. But, you know, in my prior life, I did a lot of underground construction and it's exceedingly expensive. I did gray water projects in Florida for God's sake. So it's a lot of money and there's a lot. So it's a lot of money and there's a lot of oversight, a lot of engineering, a lot of inspections. And, um, you know, I'm not sure which direction the water would come down. Is it gonna come down Center Road? Is it gonna go through amusement, through, uh, that goes into Ridge Road? These are significant construction efforts.
They are.
And, uh, you know, is that enough money to cover it? I don't know.
It, it depends on the way the trustees would have agreed to bring the monies or bring the water in. But those costs that you just mentioned, the engineering and the inspections are a part of the, the conversation. That is information that I provided this board at roughly $82,000, um, was what the county had given me. And they said the engineering was 30 to 40,000 and then the inspections are about 15 to 20% of the projected, projected cost. So that's about $82,000 for most of the, the projects that we are looking at. So those have been rolled in and it's a very good point that you bring up.
And it's my understanding actually that when the water was being run down Stony Hill, that the county sent out that petition saying, would you tie into the water? And people said, yes, bring it out here. We'll tie into it. And nobody did. And because of that project with Medina County, I don't know if you can confirm this or not, but it is now a legally binding document. If someone signs a petition saying, yes, I want this, they are legally obligated. Hinkley changed that forever. We're special. And it's because it is very expensive to not only tie into it, but to run it. You know, to run it back to the back of your property, which is generally where your well is. That's a lot of fee there you're talking about. So it would be interesting if people realized that by signing a petition, you are contractually obligated not only to run it and tie into it, but to fill in your well and then start paying for water on top of it. That's a lot of costs we're talking about. And the thing that concerns me with this is, Lissy, you said a couple of times, it will keep big business out to have water. I don't see how that keeps big business out having water. I don't see how it keeps it, I would think that it makes it more appealing and more enticing to have the county water.
But I think, in my opinion, you're giving these mom and pop shops who are struggling to pay the bills necessary for maintaining their wells, the opportunity to thrive.
It's gonna be a much bigger, it's gonna be a much bigger build.
I don't know that the signing the petition is a legally binding. I know that they do have to put a deposit down at the time when I worked on this back in 2017. I think it was a hundred dollars per resident or business.
No, I think she's correct. I think it changed because they did all that capital investment, the county did. And, and all those residents then negated and said, well, we'll tie in after our well goes. And, and the county, that was, that was it for the county. They changed the entire program.
Well, I know that they said that they weren't gonna come back into Hinkley to do the second phase, but I don't know about, yeah. I, I, I just, I'm not, not familiar with that, but, um, yeah.
And if for any reason it's not legally binding, I would say it needs to be because it's a considerable amount of money. We need to know, sorry, but your word is not good enough. It's, we need to know that you're gonna tie into this and use this. If not, it was a waste of money, you know, similar to what happened with the county. It would be a complete waste of money for only one or two businesses.
Which is why there's a deposit required. And they have, there's a specific percentage they have to meet in order to, to.
Well, the deposit's like, what, $200 or something like that?
But they, I, and I have to talk to the county, but there's a specific percentage of those folks that would have to tie in. Now, I'm, I'm even hearing word and I don't, I don't have any, this is just word, it's just a rumor. But, um, I know that the water at the old Hinkley Elementary School wasn't good. When my kids went through there from beginning to end, um, they were told to bring water bottles to school because it was so bad. And I'm her, I'm hearing that the old, the new elementary school's water is actually worse. And they have the ability to tie in. They built it in when they, when they put the building in. So.
Yeah, they couldn't. They opted not to tie into it.
Yep. So.
Majority rules. Guys aside, this water is great. I really would like to see though, is that a whole tranche of money, as much as possible, devoted to a single project. Whether it's, um, solar energy, which I kind of like because it should reduce the cost somewhere along the line. But what's the cost to build? What's the cost to maintain? I like the idea of plugging it all in for a road job. Where I get concerned is the money that's relieved from that by putting that tranche of money for the road job, it is gonna get chopped up and everybody's gonna be butting heads about where this hundred thousand dollar goes, where this fifty thousand dollar goes. You know, I need a new truck. I need to do whatever. I'd really like to see all the, the money placed in one big project. Also because I think it'd be a heck of a lot easier to, to, to track and account for because sure as, sure as heck, we're gonna have to account for that money to any number of people and agencies and social ones.
And that's a valid point.
I completely agree with you. With the CARES Act fund, it was myself that was doing that, tracking it per department. And it was a five-page.
It's, it's a, it's an onerous burden to have to account for money provided by the federal government. I mean, it just comes with the territory. But it's, this is enough money to make that burden bearable, I think. Because whatever's done, there's gonna be something positive come from it, I would, I hope. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Anyone else? Trustees?
Good.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at 8:27 PM.
Second.
Seconded by Astral. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is the game over?
Game is over and it was sad.
It was sad?
One five.
How do you know this?
He knows things.
You're definitely gonna have to have a drink.